About our master planning, which would potentially include a possible merger with Minerva Deland and corresponding facilities planning, which we'll be talking about in a little bit. But I'm going to kick things off by handing it off to our Board of Education President, Mr. Peter Forsgren.
Thank you Brett. And the green light's on. Yes, no? Okay, great. Doesn't sound like it to me. But thank you all for being here today. I don't know how many of you might be repeats, repetition. I suppose since we're in education, that's a good thing, right? We repeat things a lot on purpose. But I do recall a public speaking class where they tried to tell us, you know, "Don't repeat, avoid reiteration, don't say something again if you've already said it, then once is enough." But if I haven't said that enough, we're going to repeat some things tonight, or today if you haven't been here already. I want to thank the Board members for coming out. We have Joyce Kostic over here, Damon Buffum, and Maureen Knup. I hope I haven't missed any. But I really thank you for caring, not just about the students you're all involved in with, but about our facilities, which are an important part. This is a big, huge discussion for us, and it's going to have impact for years to come in many different ways. We've talked about many different things. If you haven't heard that, then we'll talk about it more today. I want to thank Brett and Matt also. They put together so much information, not just for these four community and staff forums that we've had, but going back at least for two years, right? Where we started the long-term plan cycle has taken a lot. We've asked from a board perspective, but also from the community, right, for lots of information, lots of data. And they've been so willing to get us everything, anything that we've needed. And thank our other people that have been brought into this, right? Campus Construction, Labella Architects for being here, they've been at all four. But over the time, they've also provided us with lots of information. And we've said, "Well, what about this?" And you can imagine that sends some things back to the drawing board. So it's great to be here. I thank you for your time. We want to hear from you. I think of a 2D circle, right? 360 degrees. We can look at this as many perspectives, but we haven't looked at all 360. Now, if we add it to 3D, it's an infinite number of perspectives. And so it's good for us to hear and to be able to respond. And I'm glad you're here so that we can hear from you and answer your questions, or just listen if you just want to say something. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter. There are no cards up here, so if there's a question that you're interested to ask, or if you want us to just make a statement or have some thoughts, by all means, please feel free to grab these at the end, or even during the middle of our presentation. So I know our Board of Education is very interested in hearing, again, all different perspectives as they move along in this path. And, you know, I just want you to sort of get a sense of what we're going to be trying to accomplish here. This works best, I think, if you feel like you have questions, by all means, ask a question, all right? And if we're going to get to a slide and we haven't gotten to it, I'll say, "Well, just, you know, hold on, we're going to get there in a slide or two," or if we want to move ahead. So don't be afraid, don't be shy. Like I said, this is us trying to just interact and learn from each other. But we want to just give you a context of where we've been. We just didn't end up here today. There's been an incredible process that we've engaged in, and we've had multiple different opportunities to interact with school members through surveys, through focus groups, and through our district advisory council. So this has been a journey that we've been on for the past year and a half, almost two years. We're going to be discussing the educational and fiscal impacts of a potential merger. The Board of Education, for the past year, beginning last May, June, July, and August, we've been studying this, having conversations at board workshops, at board meetings, and we're on the cusp of making a decision. And you'll hear this again, it will be May 6th is when the final decision will be made. That was the best agreed about time, that all board members can come together as one unit. And we hope to understand how this decision impacts facilities planning. Now, there are two separate conversations, but they're interrelated. And we're hoping that we could draw a line, and you could be able to see very specifically how, you know, they're important to each other, but they're very different ideas, but they are interrelated. As I was saying, last year, we had our district advisory council. Over 3,000 people were involved in the district advisory council. University of Rochester, who plans and works with all sorts of stakeholders throughout the state, reiterated how impressed they were with the amount of spirit and pride that our Fairport community has. Having 3,000 people interact with a school district, again, by an agency that works with all different types of schools throughout the state, and they said that our participation and feedback was remarkable. So we feel like we have a good pulse from the community. And the three priorities that we focused on were educational programming. Now, this to me is, this becomes very personal to me, because, you know, we all, you know, experience our schools every single day, from the amount of extracurricular, co-curricular clubs that our students engage in, to our rich, robust academic programming, intervention services, alternative programming. Our students, our community deserve the best and expect the very best. And the people that haven't even gone to our schools, they demand that same type of experience that everyone, past and present, are experiencing today in our schools. The educational programming component of our future planning is the number-one priority because it drives all their decisions. Facilities planning. We need to make sure that we take care of our facilities, that we nurture, create environments so students can learn in the best, welcoming, engaging learning environments as possible. And fiscal sustainability. Again, making sure that we could duplicate programming, not just today, but tomorrow, well into the future. And that's when you look at this conversation, you have to look at the short of it, of course, but the long of it. And that's where that sustainability piece comes into. And then, as we were going through, this idea of maximizing state building aid through project phasing. We want to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible and responsive to the community members in Fairport. And we'll be talking about how that plays, maximizing our building cost allowances to make sure that we're doing it in an economically feasible and responsible way. And this is a series of events that will occur. We need to minimize and manage the impact on teaching and learning. Important to recognize that this is not going to happen tomorrow. This is going to happen in six to seven years. And I'm putting that out there, okay? And I know that there'll be some variables that might impact that, and I know that, including myself, and even members of our Board of Education, would want us to act a little bit faster on that. But, you know, and for these purposes, it's just important to recognize we're looking at, you know, a six- to seven-year window when it comes to engaging in the full effects of this. So that's like looking at our second graders of today, right? Third graders will be sophomores. So just to give you context, it's in the future, but not, I remember when my son was a third grader. It flies by, but it's important that we're planful. Didn't mean to do that, it just happens. The district advisory council, again, focused on educational programming, facilities planning, and fiscal sustainability. One of the main pieces that we were focusing in on is ensuring the educational programming opportunities for all of our students. And we take it for granted, but the hundreds of clubs that we offer our students, the AP classes, the extended enrichment opportunities, the alternative ed program, the RTI, the ENL, the special ed program, is the depth and breadth of our programming we're proud of. That's a priority. We learn through the district advisory council, again, our community members, school members, staff, people who have children in the pipeline, feel that we need to make sure that we're nurturing our environments, making sure that they're welcoming, that we have flexible and responsive environments so students can learn. Welcoming environments, not tired environments, welcoming environments so people feel good about coming to our schools. And this idea of being coherent in our instruction. And I think you know what that means. It's making sure that no matter what school you go to, there's a spiraled sequence vertically and horizontally. So it doesn't matter if you're at JA, Brooksville, Dudley, Northside, or the two middle schools, or 910, there needs to be a spiraled sequence experience. And that's a lot of the factors that are driving this conversation. Of course, building safety. We've been acting on that this past year. Safety and security is a priority. And when we talk about our future capital projects, safety and security will continue to be a conversation. This past year, as many of you know, we've been working with Monroe County and the Fairport Village Police to do a comprehensive audit. And we'll be seeing pieces of that audit as we move along. But again, a district priority through our planning process. Technology, you know, making sure that students have access to all the widgets, right? Because when they go to college, they're going to have access to the widgets. But what we know is they need to be able to use it in a constructive and meaningful fashion. And, you know, that's where a lot of professional development comes in. We just can't put computers and tools in our students' hands without talking about or discerning in how they're being used for educational purposes. And again, that was an expectation of the community. Facilities, enhancing educational facilities of the school district. Protecting our investments, making sure that we just don't do these lump-sum $29.2 million projects on top of each other, or having a big project after 10 years of doing nothing, right? And you could see in this year's budget, I'm proud of the fact that our Board of Education has allocated dollars to continue to build upon and maintain our infrastructure, taking care of our, and protecting our investment with, you know, putting rate in the budget line items that will support the maintenance of our facilities. But some of this work also needs to be done in capital projects, which we'll be talking about, and fiscally responsible, making sure that we're making decisions for the good of our community. And one thing that I think, you know, we were working with the University of Rochester, and this data is pretty compelling. This came right from the focus groups and the surveys. There was overwhelming consensus that Fairport schools were well-maintained but dated. And you could think, you know, some parts of the high school, you know, you'll see the same areas that those of you who went to school in the '70s and '80s are still alive and well and functioning. And I think that, you know, when it comes to creating a welcoming facility, a facility that we're all proud of, a facility that doesn't have any shortcomings as far as meeting the newest codes, you know, we fall short of that. But we're working on trying to improve that. There was a commitment to, there was not a commitment to collaboration in building design. A lot of schools, a lot of districts that are creating new spaces, that's what they're focusing in on. Spaces where students can come in and collaborate, open spaces. I was in an architecture class last week, and these architecture students had the opportunity to go into one of the large group areas, the professional development room, classroom A, I believe it is. And they said, "Once they were in this room, the level of collaboration, the level of energy that occurred amongst themselves in this open area changed their whole experience, unsolicited. I wish I had the mic, I wish I could have taped it, because they could have said it better." And students thrive in this environment, when they can be flexible, when they could take an environment, and, you know, whether it's, you know, designing space differently, whether it's using different furniture, it creates a different environment for our students. One respondent told us that for decades, Fairport has emphasized the educational program at the expense of facility maintenance and updating. The most common responses were to leave the configuration as it is and move the ninth grade to the high school. Again, this was our community speaking to us through our district advisory council. We're over 3,000 people, we're interacting with us, we were learning from them, trying to get a pulse on what they were thinking were the priorities of our school, or what they thought the priorities of our school district should be. Educational programming, again, people have high expectations, they believe in our staff, they believe in the programming, they appreciate how we meet students where they are, from special Olympics to special class, to ENL, to alternative education, to our AP classes, to our enrichment activities, to our co-curriculars. People expect that. And I think that's cool, and I'm proud to be a part of that. And I think that's what makes this conversation so compelling. We're in a community that thinks that this is a priority, hands down, 98%. Safety's not a surprise right there. So whenever we're talking about future planning, we should be talking about safety. And technology, as we discussed, 88% of the respondents said they want their children to be ready for the next phase in life. And technology and how to interact and use technology in a responsible manner, that is the priority. Professional development, making sure the staff has the right tools and resources. So when you talk about technology, when you talk about curriculum coherence, when you talk about flexible and responsive learning environments, what does teaching and learning look like in that space? We have an obligation to make sure that our staff is well-prepared to accept the responsibilities and challenges as we move along. And this idea of facilities, 81% said, "You know what? Take care of your facilities, protect your investments, because it's a priority." Here's a piece. 92% said, "Upgrade." 54% said, "Reduce your building usage." 81% said, "Hey, you know what? If we take care of our facilities, that might be good for our community." Because if community members or families are thinking between Fairport, who has nicely well-kept, well-maintained, 21st century learning environments, people will come to our schools and have a lot of pride, versus like another district, right? They're doing stuff out there. We want to have facilities that we're proud of, and let them think about Fairport. Let them come to Fairport because we have the best facilities. So I think that was, again, improving our reputation. Because if you look at where a lot of people come, and we've done a lot of work in that new corridor, there's been great design and great collaboration. Again, if you look at our team rooms, that's where visitors come, right? Lots of health, safety, and code deficiencies there. If you look at our gymnasium, from air ventilation to, you know, the walls, to the ceilings, there's lots of work. If you look at our facilities, our pool facilities, right? The pool, again, there's people here who might argue with me, but it's a good pool, but the facility needs a lot of work, right? From underneath the guts and the infrastructure to the seats and the stands, right? And I know that there's lots of ideas around that. So that's about our reputation. So from all this planning came our strategic initiatives. And I've been throwing these out throughout the year, and I know that it doesn't make for the best reading, but I'm proud of the fact that we've been focusing in on these initiatives. This past year, we've been focusing on safety. The safety audits, we've been trying to upgrade, you know, where we can upgrade and take care of it through our building projects in our general fund budget. But there's going to be recommendations as we move along that are going to be about safety and security, that need to come through a capital project. Create a multi-year plan to meet the essential building improvements identified in the New York State mandated building condition survey. Every single school district in New York State has to do a building condition survey. It's every five years, and that focuses on the health, safety, the useful life of all of your equipment and physical plant resources. We have to do that. And our Board of Education spent, again, a good portion of the year, probably much to their dismay, they learned a lot about the building condition survey. And so did our facilities planning group last year, focused on the building condition survey. And we know that work needs to get done in our buildings, and we recognize and understand that it needs to be a priority moving forward. We also talked about facilities planning initiative number two. Complete a cost-benefit analysis of combining Minerva Deland and Fairport High School. And that's part of the reason why we're here today. And that's part of the reason why the Board is very interested in understanding and hearing from different views. And we've been talking to Bob Clark and his team, and Pam Serani and her team came doing some research on the importance of transitions. So that's been a conversation that we've had since the beginning of the school year as well. So they have all this background, knowledge, and information. And it's important that you recognize that we've been working at it, studying it throughout the year. If appropriate, identify and pursue renovations associated with a reorganization plan, okay? I think when you hear me talk about a capital, future capital project, or a potential capital project, it's coming from our district advisory council, right? And I think, again, it's important that we recognize that this is part of a bigger conversation picture that's been occurring. I think if appropriate, identify and design requirements associated. This one. Complete a cost-benefit analysis of repurposing existing administration spaces. That's going to come up, because people are going to ask that along the way here. You know, "What are you going to do with all your other spaces?" And I think I'll just refer to the bullet, the second-to-last bullet from this point forward, but it's in the thinking, it's in the next phases. The first two bullets have been focused this year. If you take a look at our enrollment, this past year, we did another study in our enrollment, and the good news is that we've leveled off. You know, we have some predictability, and that's so important to recognize that, you know, our enrollments are going to be steady. They're not going to be down to 5,300. We are going to remain in the 5,600, particularly in the next five years. We're going to have graduating classes between 415 and 440 for the next five to 10 years, okay? And if you take a look at our facilities plans or staffing, that predictability is very important. And that should make people feel better, considering where we've been in the past few years. And you'll see, one differential is, you know, we have a K-class here, this past year or next year, that's 400. And you'll see it's increasing and decreasing and increasing again, and finally increasing. That's because we have what's called the live birth ratio, somewhere between minus one and one. And what that means is, it's going to grow, but we're also going to lose people, based upon the statistical analysis of our last enrollment study, okay? So that's why you'll see a gradual enrollment, but you'll see some pushing back, losing some students throughout the years. And if you look at, you know, the students that were graduating, between, right now 480, and we're bringing in 400, you could sort of see that, you know, that's where the, you know, the big difference is. We still have some leveling off to do. But at the end of the day, you know, we've seen our sharpest declines, and we have a sense of stability. And here's another slide, and I don't want to rush over this one. The blue, that's past enrollment, 2005 to 2010. That's the blue line right here. Grade levels 10, 11, and 12, right? You've lived this. In 2007 and 2008, there were 1,800 students, right? If you just take a look at 2021, 2022, there's going to be about 1,732, okay? So that is with 9, 10, 11, 12, okay? So with four grade levels, and we're never going to be able to, I don't want to say never, the projections claim and state that we're not going to be as high as we were when we had three grade levels in. This is an important fact, too, though. Over the past several years, there's been changes in room utilization. Basically, that means the facilities are being used completely different. And the main office is one area, that new office suite that focuses in on safety and security, that was three and a half rooms, all right? So we took three and a half rooms and took them out of the mix. We've also expanded response to intervention, alternative education, we've added staff development, and teacher workrooms. These are all spaces that we need to recoup as we bring kids back. You take a look at special education in green, that's 10 classrooms that have been used for special education. Now, previously, in earlier years, we did not have the level of program that we have today. And that means that every single period, these classrooms are being used for special ed purposes. Yes?
Actually, is this current? Current?
Current configuration, yes. Yes, right? And we have, again, ENL classrooms, dedicated classrooms, professionals using those classrooms, okay? So for the most part, we are needing to recoup these spaces as we think about transitioning students back in. I think it's just important that you put that in the back of your mind, okay? As we continue to have this conversation.
Brett?
Yes?
Before you go on, can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
You said that is current. I don't know how picky I want to be, but down by the number nine?
Okay.
Is that supposed to be 427? Is it the first floor or the second floor?
This is the, this is the second floor.
Yeah, that's not a special ed room.
That's not a special ed room?
Just so you know, I just.
Okay.
12 is also an ed room.
What's that?
12 is also.
12 is, 12 is another special ed room?
It's not.
Okay, okay. 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 That's, again, that's, that's, that's fine, I'm open to that. I do think, though, it speaks to the fact that we have lost spaces, though. And we need to recoup and rethink spaces in order to bring students back in, okay? And I can, we can shore up those numbers happily. The educational impact, considerations for a merger. The Board of Education has been focusing in on this as the number-one priority. Students cannot be brought over and lose opportunity. We need to make sure that students have access to all the great things that they have, and if not more, if ninth graders were to come over. If we can't guarantee that, the Board, I do not think will support any type of merger. Transitions. What does the research say about transitions? How do we need to make sure that, you know, we, when we do transition, if we, if we transition, how do we do it in a best-practice way? If you're a student at Northside, Dudley, or Dudley-Northside, you can have up to five transitions. And we know that it takes time for students to transition, only to leave again, especially in a crucial year as ninth grade, that needs to be considered as well. This idea of coherence, making sure that staff talks to each other, that teaching, excuse me, the what, the curriculum, is created in a way that there's levels of coherence in our programming. Teachers could talk about student learning, we can come together as a staff more fluently, and that is a best practice that yields results and growth for students. This idea of aligning start times to research, with a potential merger, that conversation remains alive and well. If you do not have a merger, it becomes more challenging to align the start times to research because of how we bus and how we tier our bus runs. So with a merger, it becomes a viable, a viable opportunity. And without, it becomes a challenge, it becomes a feasibility study, again, because we know that it takes about, you know, 15 to 18 buses to accomplish that. It just so happens to have that at Minerva Deland. Continued use of Minerva Deland assets, meaning we still need that facility. Our middle schools use it, our elementary schools use it for performances, athletic fields and athletic contests, it's an important option to have. We cannot lose that facility, and we continue to plan for using that as we move along. And if we ever needed to use the space to house students, house certain classes, if we needed to take a portion of FHS or another school off the books for a little bit while we reconstruct to minimize any type of distraction, that could be a possible area for what we call swing, swing space. Mr. Stevens? Change it up.
Come on over.
Let's do a little duet, sing. You don't want to hear that.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Provenzano, and good evening, or good afternoon, early afternoon. So the next piece to talk about is really the fiscal impact, you know, and what are some of the efficiencies that the district could possibly realize in merging Minerva Deland students over to Fairport High School. And a couple of the pieces you see up on here to be expected would be staffing efficiencies, that being the largest piece of an estimated savings or efficiency in combining ninth grade over to Fairport High School. You see approximately $321,000. The other, the other piece would be operating and transportation efficiencies, so a piece we have to factor in there. Obviously, we'd have students with one location to bus to, but we also get transportation aid on busing, you know, the expenses related to transportation. So we'd have to reduce that piece out for any revenue loss that would take place there. So overall, about $350,000 of expense efficiencies and revenue, you know, a projection of leasing out Minerva Deland, approximately $70,000. Just, it's a projection at this point, based on some of the information that we're aware of regarding other situations for leasing in other districts. Obviously, I think an overall goal would be to try to maximize any revenue the district could receive through leasing itself. Important to note, though, in leasing buildings, school districts have requirements. Basically, it's released to, you may lease to public or governmental, so schools, towns, villages, counties, those are the, those are the restrictions. It's because districts have tax-exempt debt on their properties. So when, when schools issue out tax-exempt debt, there are a certain amount of rules and regulations around who and regulations around who you may lease to in that, in that piece. So about $420,000 of efficiencies, of which the district may choose, you know, a couple of different ways to look at, look at those savings. It could either be on an annual budget, so decrease in budget, or look at allocating any funds to a future capital workover at, offsetting any tax impact in future capital projects. Other pieces to consider as well, as Brett mentioned earlier, would be any of our properties. So if the district were, was able to move any staff over to Minerva, in that case, there's other properties the district could look at in terms of selling. It'd be one-time revenue for the district and also any sale of property would be required to be placed in a debt service reserve and that would go to offset any future debt payments or go against any future debt payments, so have the tax impact on that side. So that's basically the fiscal impact overall in terms of the different pieces the district could look at in terms of a potential merger of Minerva and High School. Turn it back over to Brett. Any questions?
Yep. Can I ask a question? The White Grove property, I thought there was only, you were only able to sell it with the capacity of a school.
Yeah, there are covenants on that property itself that the district would have to, you know, review in terms of right of first refusal and the sale of that property back to Lollipop. And there are restrictions in terms of how it may be used. So, good question.
So it wouldn't be like the sale of the century because there are covenants and obligations that we need to go back to Lollipop and, and, you know, fill those obligations? Yes, Ken?
Can you talk a little bit about how you arrived at the number of staffing efficiencies? Like what kind of costs? What's the cost?
Well, long-term, I mean, obviously being out six to seven years, you know, it'd be the district would make every effort to do anything through attrition or efficiencies and those pieces, but looking at some of the support staff, different pieces that could be redundancies across both buildings. So that essentially is how, you know, arrived to any projections. Work closely with the principals, administration at Minerva and High School to try to understand the different pieces at each building. I mean, we still have, we still have the students to teach, so those, you know, obviously it's, you know, different pieces of overlap that may exist.
And I do think, and, you know, Peter, please feel free to jump in, you know, there would be a high expectation to see if we can maximize that number there. That right there is a, you know, it's, it's a, it's a conservative estimate, you know, what would be the Board's expectations? I know right off the bat that they, they would try to maximize that if, if it does, a merger does take place and the expectation is to repurpose it, to use it for a variety of different ways. You know, it, it does shift our, our trajectory, but it's not a, you know, it's not like a monetary windfall, right? It just shifts, you know, and offsets that, which could directly or even indirectly impact the tax rate for the community.
This is something we would like to see, it would have been better, obviously, but then when you think five or six years out, we're not going to make a decision based on hope, right? So hope of revenue that we just can't guarantee the community, so it had to be low. And I'm glad we went conservative on that number, but indeed, I think the Board, future Boards, whether I'm on it or others are on it or not, is, the job is to say, we have to do better than 70,000 if we have this big, huge facility that many others can use. But at this point, five to six years out, it's just hard to gauge that.
And that brings me back to this slide. I mean, this should be our number one priority, right? Whatever this yields, I, I think it speaks to sustainability, it speaks to working effectively and efficiently for the good of our community and taxpayers, and that feels good, but this is where we need to have our points of pride. Making sure that the educational impact is sound, that students have optimal opportunities, that transitions are done in a highly effective, fluent manner. It brings staff together, gives them the opportunity to communicate and collaborate around teaching and learning. And if you have that added benefit of the start times, I, I think I need to reiterate that because that's something I know that this Board has, has long seen as a priority. So I, I think that it's, you know, what we've learned as we've done these, we've added this slide, it's a pathway to a merger, okay? It is not an immediate merger. It's a step one, which is happening next month, and I put it out there, it was May 6th. The Board will make a decision, they're having a special session dedicated solely to this conversation where they're going to have an opportunity to reflect on it and share their thoughts in public. And the community will know, May 6th, their intention, okay? Step two would be a capital improvement project referendum vote in December of 2019. And that's going to be based upon infrastructural improvements and the scope of work identified in our building condition survey. So this one right here, step two, has really nothing to do with a merger. I will be most likely recommending this step no matter what direction we go in. And we're going to get into those details. And then, three years later, step three, a 2022 capital improvement project referendum vote, which will again be another platform, step closer to merging Minerva and Fairport High School, bless you. And take care of BCS items. And we're going to break that down for you right now so you could get a sense of what that actually means. But I, I just think that you, you know, it helps us when we see it in three separate steps. And if you have questions at any point, by all means, jump in. And I'm going to ask Kevin Rodmacher, just to change the pace and to hear a different voice, to, to share his thoughts about the capital project, and Mark Esposito, our construction manager.
Good afternoon. So right now, we're looking at the 2019 proposed capital project. So this is the project that does not affect merger necessarily. It does help accommodate that to happen in the future in the following project. So what's included in this scope is building condition survey items. So every five years, we're required, you're required to conduct a building condition survey. We did that for you. We also met with building administration across the board, looked at instructional space improvements and general improvements in the buildings that needed to be done over time. And these are just a few excerpts from that for this building alone. So part of that is the team rooms. That was actually, we looked at that in the last project, at doing that along with the locker rooms that were renovated in the last project. Were able to accommodate that with the dollars that were available. So that's kind of first on the list to get done in this project. Another thing that was looked at was the kitchen cafeteria spaces. Kitchens, long overdue for an update. The cafeterias are split up into three different areas. Supervision is kind of tough in there, so we looked at opening that up. What'll this, this'll do is allow that to be a flexible space for use after hours and so on, but also allow for a larger capacity of student population. So you could minimize the amount of lunch periods, especially if you bring over another student population from Minerva.
These are just conceptual drawings. At any point in time, if this ever became a reality, we would get our user groups involved. That means pretty much the people that are in the area, the principals, teams who actually would be teaching, you're going to hear about science classrooms in a little bit, they will be part of the design of that. So I, you know, don't take this as, this is a done deal. But I, I do want to point this one thing out, which I think is very exciting. You know, so you have a space pretty bit, pretty much about the size of this room here, sitting off of the cafeteria, okay? That would be another large group instruction area for people or students to come together to learn in a flexible learning environment. Remember, the district advisory council spoke to, students need these open spaces, they need these collaborative spaces where we can do different things from NASA hunch to robotics to critical friends and debates. You know, staff could even use it for professional development and learning centers. So this is something that takes care of a district initiative, uses space differently, and I think, you know, would be an important priority for the district.
So you'll see a little bit of that in the next floor plan that we get to. So there'll be some modification to the faculty staff break room there. It'll get repurposed and kind of build into those classrooms that are on the backside. So we've looked at moving all of the existing spaces in here to accommodate that. We also have the gym work that's going on there. Some of it you don't see every day, but there, there are mechanical items that need to be replaced over time. So air handling units that are behind the wall that service the gym, the walls, the floor, backstops, things like that, that need to be replaced over time. So we'd be looking to address that core and likely the corridor in between, and we kind of go along with the theme that was done in the event entry and, and main office in the last project. If you're looking along this row of classrooms too, you can see it overlaps a lot with cafeteria. And what that allows us to do is to renovate from the underside much of the science classrooms. And we're going to do all of the science classrooms is really the goal here. We're able to get some flexible space by moving some partitions, getting some more space in each of those rooms to accommodate some more flexible learning spaces within those classrooms, which are pretty confined right now. So we're actually gaining a little square footage because we're infilling that courtyard below to, to make that part of the kitchen, but also that space has gained up in the science classroom. So we're able to move partitions around and really make that efficient. Again, all of this is designed schematically, it's for costing with campus, but focus groups would be involved throughout the design process to understand exactly what's needed, you know, I need a drawer here, a door here, the partition needs to move.
So the one thing that I think is important to recognize is this is a multi-year phase and this has nothing to do with bringing students over at this time, okay? And I'm going to ask Mark Esposito from campus to talk about really, really quickly, how many summers is this? And if you go to the first floor, what does that do to the cafeteria? You know, because we have students and we need to make sure that we give them, you know, a quality experience, that we don't interrupt their lives. We were here, I think, a year and a half ago and, you know, when there's construction going on, we do all we can to try to minimize it and maximize our time. But, Mark, would you take a moment to speak to that?
So just speaking to that point, the construction, it does get invasive at times, but it's something that I think on the first slide, we talked about minimizing the disruption to the educational process, but, and we also look at trying to maximize the dollars for all this to happen. Right now, this first phase would be a three summers worth of duration with some work happening in the school years that we would section ourselves off. Specifically looking here at the science wing, we'd be looking to see if we could take over maybe three to four classrooms at a time, renovate them, turn them over as new space and work our way through that hallway over the course of a two-year process, utilizing three summers of construction. Again, very conceptual thought process at this time, moving forward. I mean, we utilize these plans that Kevin has put together for square footages, to look at the big picture, develop some overall rough budget numbers for us to utilize in moving forward and creating some types of projects. And then also just to go back to like a cafeteria type situation, to renovate the, the square footage in that space cannot be done in the summertime. To pull the guts out of a kitchen, if anyone's done a home renovation at their house and tried to do a kitchen, a kitchen, I think the fastest at a house could be done is six weeks. Summertime, we get 10 weeks, and you're talking about industrial, commercialized kitchen where we're cutting up concrete, people don't have that in their house. I mean, to do a kitchen in a school building, you're at a solid four-month process. So utilizing and setting up a temporary facility for eating and things to that extent will be something that we're looking to do. Inside of this, what Kevin talked about, building an addition in the courtyards, at this location, and this location where the cafeterias are split up, that's something that we would have to do to isolate that space and be able to create the space that would be finalized for usage, is close to an eight-month process. So it's something that as we would go and start building this out, it's definitely something we're working with the staff, the administrators in the building to minimize that disruption to make sure we can continue the educational process.
I just have a question about the picture before, the science, is that blue all science classroom reconstruction? Or is that, like, is that whole entire hallway? Because some of those are bathrooms.
Can I jump in?
And I didn't know it. And we were taking over, you can do it.
They are mostly science classrooms. There are some overlapping space when you get to general science classrooms. Those can be utilized either way, but they will be upgraded in this scenario. So part of that would be getting with the staff and making sure that everything works out from a schedule standpoint. There is a, a large vacancy rate here at the high school, so we've gone through and studied that. So whether it's a partial day in a room or a full day in certain rooms, rooms that have been turned over as resource over time. So there's ways to make, make that up and, and that'll be more intensely looked at, but generally, it seems to work so far.
So this slide here kind of shows a breakdown. So we utilize these plans for rough numbers, putting together project budgets estimates. And in the left-hand column, you see scope of work associated with Fairport High School that was highlighted in the blue. This includes a science classroom renovations, kitchen cafeteria area, the team room, gymnasium improvements. What wasn't shown was a turf field replacement on that, and then also all of the building condition work that's associated with the high school. So that values an up to about $34.9 million worth of construction. And then over on the right-hand side, because of the BCS, we also have to address every other building in the district still, still has money getting put into each one of those districts for an up to of $12.2 million value. This includes really addressing all secure entrances at every building, including upgrading some STEM and technology classrooms at different buildings, upgrading the toilet renovation spaces, similar to what we did here at Fairport High School in the last phase of the project, boiler plant replacements, because all of the HVAC systems need to be upgraded at these buildings, code compliance work, replacing exit signs where they need to be, make sure all of the strobe lights, emergency lighting is upgraded throughout those facilities. And then asset preservation at Minerva Deland. Some of the window work still needs to be done at that building to make sure it can be utilized for leasing out in the future, and so that investment would be part of this project. So right now, this first phase of, of the 2019 referendum vote that we're looking at could be up to a $47.1 million. Again, once the Board does make kind of that decision to, the initiative to move forward or not, we'll start looking at this scope of work over the summer, really identifying those, those actual have-to-have items and really honing in that work and start focusing this number where it needs to be.
So Mark, I know I asked you last time, you did this, but you call it a $47 million number, but I think it's important to understand that after we get our building aid units and building aid back on this, what's the net cost of the district approximately?
I mean, looking at this, I mean, you guys get back 70, 78 cents on every dollar that you spend on aid, where this majority of this project would be aidable. So I mean, I think we looked at it last time and it was close to $11 million, but utilizing capital reserve and minimizing that fiscal responsibility of the district and the communities would be something that we'll be focusing on in the summer months.
So the real strategy is manage that cost. $47 million is the total cost, but there's aid, we get back on that, there's ways that we cycle in these projects, and so when debt comes off our books, we put in debt on to minimize the impact of the taxes. The other thing I just wanted to clarify, when you started, right, you said that this is going to be seven years before we see an impact ultimately? And I agree with the ultimate impact of a merger potential, but this first phase is going to show, is going to impact the district?
Immediately. Yeah, this, this first phase would impact the district immediately. And, and you know, the debt management piece, and that's where, you know, the very first project that we were looking at, there was a $35 million addition that would be isolated in the back of the building, would house, you know, I think 14 to 16 science classrooms. We did not get aid on that. We only got like $6 million worth of aid. And that's because the state has a formula and we have to, you know, be true to that formula and maximize those allowances. And if we were going to maximize those allowances, we'd be bringing that one forward. But there's no way we could bring that forward because of what Damon said is, we, we did not receive the building age units because of our declining enrollment and the number of students that we've had and the amount of debt that we currently have. It just wasn't a feasible solution for us. So that's where this scenario came into play. And again, these are, the ideas that we saw were concepts, you know, science classrooms, math classrooms, yeah, all those will be part of bigger conversations if we move forward and when we move forward, and we'd be bringing people into that conversation. Yeah, but this is isolated, really has nothing to do with a, a potential merger. This is getting down to the work that needs to occur in our district.
Out of curiosity, are you guys considering like, or we're thinking things like, you know, who knows where the future lies, but it seems like with facilities being used as long as our years are, with the classrooms getting to 100-plus degrees, are you considering like HVAC systems that are capable of things that may be improved in the future, are looking into things like that to make sure that, you know, have the.
So, so you're talking about air conditioning?
Yeah, I mean, air conditioning would be anything, but air conditioning is, is definitely a concern for student activity.
Air quality, right? And I, and I.
It's huge.
Yeah, and I'll let, I'll let Kevin explain it. But yeah.
I just surveyed my students today out of curiosity and asked what they would improve in their science rooms, and almost all of them commented at how freezing cold their classroom is during the winter and how hot they are in summer.
Well, in this process, certainly in a, in a full renovation, we're going to replace all the mechanicals in that space. So that whole. So that whole wing, we'll have new mechanicals that'll have requirements to meet fresh air intakes. Obviously, if there's any, you know, fume hoods or anything like that, it's going to provide makeup air for that as well and reheat so that it's still a comfortable space. But that will all be looked at. Air conditioning is not on the boards for, because that's a totally different animal in terms of cost. But, you know, we'll look at any kind of strategy, if there's a way to exhaust, but if you're just blowing hot air back in, you know, it doesn't really help you very much.
But we do know that the 1970 classrooms that we currently have are highly inefficient. And we do know that the flow of air could be a little bit more effective and efficient to meet new standards and expectations. So air quality is a priority, yes. Kevin?
I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but it was alluded to a little bit, I think, already, that I want to put it out there, that a high priority for a lot of teachers in the high school is preserving department workrooms, because the amount of collaboration that goes into the time we spend together there. For people that have worked in other districts, they say that's really what sets Fairport aside, is the quality of teaching really has a big impact. We don't have those department workrooms.
So we know that that is a priority, and we, again, just without even getting into the project where we've put our hand on the pulse of that, we know that that needs to be managed. And we also know that we have lots of unusable square footage at Fairport High School. And something, somewhere around the tomb, approximately about 7,000 square feet can be reimagined, okay? And not to say that it's going to be exactly the way it is, but there needs to be teacher space, space to work privately, space to work collaboratively, space to maybe even work with students, right? And so we would need to reimagine that space. And again, just by looking at what we have right now, without really getting into the details of it and without bringing people into the mix, meaning you, the people, I would imagine that there would be a user group that speaks to that, with, you know, getting the lead teachers or teacher representatives involved. And what type of spaces would we need to make it a comfortable space? Sometimes you need to correct those papers, sometimes you need to lesson plan, sometimes you make a phone call, sometimes you want to hang out with three or four of you in lesson plan. I've seen it, you know, and I see you do it. In my mind, I would not want to do a project that would make it less. And so I think I've overplayed that, and that's been a priority in our conversations. Did you want to speak to that, or did I hit it?
I think that's fine. I think you're going to have me speak here anyway. So that actually was a priority, and that was actually discussed five years ago during the building condition survey, and it's not necessarily associated with this, but it does help this programming that we've done come along. So if you look in the library space, we have added, so I talked about the vacancy in this building, all right? Then I talked about, I didn't talk about, but I'm talking now about Minerva Deland and the use of that space currently is roughly equivalent, we'll say, in terms of square footage. There are inefficiencies in terms of instruction type, because you're talking about the ninth grade, you can't, you know, just file in, you know, ninth through, or 10th through 12th grade in there. And, you know, dedicated space, some science classrooms and things aren't easily adjusted. So there were some, there was some need to add some classrooms back. There were three classrooms taken over with a secure vestibule and main office here in this building. There have been rooms over time that have taken over as resource classrooms. So if you look at the tan areas that are facing basically outside windows, that's a space that is required to be used as classroom space when we create classrooms. We need to have visual relief and glazing. So we've kind of retaken that space, and we've repurposed it elsewhere is the concept. So we've kind of flipped what's going on. What we're looking for in the library here now is to create workroom space there. So whether we break it down into social studies, science, math, however, or closely associate those, have a student help center within the library where the overlap can happen between teachers and students, but there's still breakout space for just teachers or, you know, cubicles or meeting space for all of the above to occur. That's really the concept that's going on here in the library. Obviously, it's without a whole lot of input from focus groups, but that would happen with the design. So there's information and a layout in there that's not set in stone. It's just there as a placeholder so we can get some numbers on it, and we know we have money going forward in design to accommodate that. Also, you know, we'd be actually expanding the footprint of what is the library there by adding an addition back here for a STEM lab and some technology space. So the current fitness center would be flipped to the other side where technology is now, and we'd be bringing in basically three classroom spaces and two lab spaces as part of an addition, which is a one-time aidable piece from the state. We'd also be moving the AD from internal to external. Yeah?
I just have a couple of questions regarding, like, the reshifting of that space. That's what's really nice. For those of us who are on the second floor all day, it seems a little, it looks like a loss of productivity.
Yeah, like time is finding a condition that we would lose time with students. And then my follow-up question, Sarah, is for workrooms currently that we have that are really outdated, is that anywhere in this plan?
The workrooms would be incorporated in both the library and/or cafeteria space. So there's two...
Like, are current workrooms that are outdated before 2022?
No, nothing would be done until 2022. It's based on the dollars and the way that the state aids, it's being split up so that you can...
So that's the good feedback that will come as part of our next level of conversation. Because, for example, if you go up to the second floor, right, you know, are there spaces that could be used efficiently in usable square footage versus how it's being used now? If you walk through, you could do that, and we would be doing that. We would say to you, like, yeah, we get it. There's times where you need your space. But there's also times when you have two periods in a row, and you might want to go to the common area, and there might be a student that you meet. So we're going to try to put all those pieces. And that's where I think, again, reiterating the point, this is just a concept. You're right, it looks nice, and it looks good on paper, but it won't mean much until we get the user groups in, and then you can really tell us, you know, what this translates to.
Brett, you have a question behind you.
Sorry, yes.
I have a couple of questions about the reconfiguration about that. One is just the logistics of every teacher having, like, a contractual requirement of having their own desk area and how that's going to go all into that one space. And two, are there plans on making that that's secure? So right now, we have workrooms that, like, students can come into, but if I have tests on my desk, for example, they don't have access to that. But if it's in the library, my concern is that that opens up a whole other, like, accountability problem about students having access to things that they shouldn't have access to.
That's why we know this will be a process, and that's why we know that good feedback like that, we certainly know that there's contractual obligations that we need to fulfill, and we'll definitely be working with all the right groups, all the units, to make sure that, you know, the user groups, the people that will be impacted by this, you know, will, you know, will need to make sure that we meet that expectation. I don't have an answer for you right now, and I can't carve it out.
I didn't know how far in the...
It's not. It's purely conceptual, but I think it's a good question, because we continually hear, you know, the what-if scenarios and did you think about that scenarios? And definitely not minimizing that or passing that on, but this was about concept. And hearing that makes me put an asterisk that we need to make sure that when it goes to that next phase, in the rendering phase, which I think, you know, Mark will be talking about a little bit, that's when we would bring the user groups in to, you know, talk about. I know that, you know, through negotiations, there were pieces in there that spoke to this very concept. So we'll be prepared. But thank you for bringing it up.
My only comment with that is, like, my concern is, like, I appreciate the need for the different phases, but if you make modifications to all the science hallway, and that eliminates workroom, then that seems made. And that should have been part of the next piece of forward-thinking, that I feel like, okay, going backwards or forwards, did you not think it through enough that, and not think it through enough that maybe you should have had that conversation before. And I worry about construction pieces happening before we reach this point, is what I guess you're saying, the initial construction impacting choices that would influence my decisions.
There's actually, we are creating workrooms. There's, so there's the faculty space, which is really independent. It crosses over with faculty workroom space that we can create, and we can accommodate, we can provide access control devices on any of those doors. So it's a pretty easy lockout system. They're not intended to have full crossover with students. It's an access point, so...
Is that on the first floor or the second floor?
This is on the first floor, right down from...
There's no faculty work area on the second floor.
Currently, the only one that we may affect, I believe, is the science workroom that's up here, right? So...
No, I mean, after you're all done, there's still no faculty workspace on the second floor. It's all on the first floor.
Unless there's another faculty workspace up there that's not science?
That's what I was saying, and I think that point is well-taken, that that needs to be part of the conversation as we move along, and the users will definitely have an understanding of how that's going to evolve.
And also, and also, again, this is a three-year period, so if the workroom remains during reconstruction throughout that period, you know, you're talking about a limited overlap there. Yes, it's down a floor. It's right at the bottom of a stairwell. I mean, I access that, I can't speak to that. Certainly, it'll come up in conversation if there's square footage available up there. If it makes sense, I'm sure we'll, you know, the board will hear you, and Brett will hear you, and maybe we'll change some things up. But really, the intent five years ago was really to provide a collaborative space where all the instruction is available there to the student, so the student can say, I need help in math and science, and everything's right here for me. So we were looking, the idea then was to create a centralized, that can always change through design. So we have square footage shown for dollars, so we'll shape that together.
All right, so talking to this, so for the second phase, the 2022 vote time period, on the left-hand column here, this is the scope of work that's really associated with making a merger happen. It's an up to $25.1 million project portion. And then again, over at the other side of the district, every other building, we have other BCS work that we're looking to do, and really incorporate a 21st century learning space into every single building, start to bring some of that flex space into the buildings that we're looking to be brought in. No work would be associated with Minerva Deland during this scope of the project as a merger would start taking place. I think what Brett was talking about, and we started talking about schedule-wise with, after some of the initiative discussion with the board, the next few months in the summer, the May, June, July, and August type timeframe, would be start looking at these scopes of work of what wants to be included into those projects. So going back to the Phase 1, these are all up to numbers that we've been talking about. We've been trying to figure out what needs to be in this scope of work. So if there's other areas that are outside of this, some of those groups and discussions will be able to happen with the community and some of the user groups then. With an approved referendum vote, there's a nine-month period after a vote that the design would take place, and it takes place in three different stages, between schematic design, design development, and then SED, submission documents. And that's where the users of the space get to sit down with the architect in a room, discuss what's needed from outlets on the walls, where desks will be planted, where doors need to be put for the educational process. I think it's really where you get into some of that workroom space, that you want to make sure you have it located on a second-floor situation. So those conversations definitely will be forthcoming. There's actually two iterations of them. One would be as we compile a lot of this work together, so we know what we want to do for our vote in 2019. Like Kevin said, we've identified a lot of the square foot spaces, so we know we can make a plan like this work, how each space would actually be utilized. That's a big discussion that we're coming in in the future months. So a total value of the Phase 2 of this portion of the work at the 2022 project, we're looking at about $43.1 million, up to that value. It really splits our scope of work in half is how we try to identify it, so we could minimize that impact over the entire duration of a seven-year portion of project amongst the high schools, so we can keep it functional and operational throughout that process. And so then just looking at schedule, I don't know if you want...
Here we are, it's April 9th. It's hard to believe, but we're looking at April 9th, and there'll be a special board meeting on May 6th. Again, it would have been sooner, but coordinating schedules and the importance of this conversation, the board wanted to make sure that their schedules are all aligned, and that would be on May 6th. And I believe it will be right here. We'll be posting that, so community members and school members would be notified in May. Board of Education will determine the scope of the project, as Mark was saying, in June, July, and August, so, you know, we can really hone in on, you know, what the priorities are, and then begin talking about a capital project vote for December, if the board chooses to do so, to take care of Phase 1, or, excuse me, Phase 2, which would be the actual BCS work and scope project work. And if you take a look at our master planning ideas, that brings us back to the very first slide, where we're looking at our strategic initiatives. And everything that we were talking about can be brought back to those priorities that our school community was referring to. And clearly, clearly, and I'm glad that people feel comfortable to come here and talk about, you know, the details and the nuances, and I respect that, and I'm looking forward to serving that and making sure that we're accommodating those very important spaces and how we interact with our students. But these are the initiatives that, this is what we were speaking to, and we're also looking at maximizing state building aid through project phasing, okay? And that means, you know, making this reasonable and cost-efficient and effective for our community members and doing it with minimal impact on teaching and learning. Now, there's no such thing as no impact. You know, if we're doing the pool, we need to make arrangements for those, the swim team. If we're doing the gym, there's lots of access and use for our gym, so we need to make sure that we're planful and minimizing, especially, you know, we're talking about cafeterias, where are they going to eat, you know, and we need to make sure that we're thoughtful about that. These things have been done before, that's why we have our partners with Campus and of course, La Bella, as we go through the design phases. You guys have been great, asking all sorts of questions. If you want to ask questions right now, you're more than welcome to. If you want us, there's little three-by-five cards there. If there's things that you didn't feel comfortable saying, or something you really think we need to continue to consider, or you think that we're completely missing, you know, I truly want to hear that, and by all means, we'll try to work it into our question and answers as we move along. Yes, Mark?
Can you go back to the slide where the fitness center, you were discussing that, and then it had been just another subject for explaining that again?
So in looking at access point, the vents entry, obviously, the parking lot is right here. This is the vents entry canopy. There's some garage doors here right now, and that's access for automotive, et cetera. It's kind of a tough place to have that kind of access. So we were looking for a spot to locate an addition and not impact really the rest of the site, tennis courts, et cetera. So there was actually a little bit of a node here that's available in terms of the layout of the site plan, so we could still provide a fire access road and a bunch of other things that are code-required. So the decision was to kind of put it here, and then we wanted to centralize that technology space. So we're going to utilize the square footage that's already there as the fitness center, and we're going to break that out into classroom space for technology to go along with the new STEM addition and automotive space that would be out there. That frees up really this whole area that's currently technology, and we'd really make that a nicer space, and that'd be part of the PE fitness center space on that side of the building, and moving athletic director to the outside, which would provide a more secure viewpoint and access for ticket purchasing without coming in the main building.
So automotive wood shop would be needed?
Correct.
And that would go on...
Backside of the building, yep. And there'll be access because of the required fire access road, per code. There's driveline access there for vehicles.
It's the plan since the pool area has been breathing in the office for a long time.
And it is worth noticing, Mark or Kevin was really talking about, you know, that little bump out. It does achieve a district initiative, creating flexible spaces, spaces that are adaptable to many different types of disciplines. But you also get a New York State one-time aid on a STEM unit. So, you know, we're maximizing aid, and if we weren't going to use that for STEM, we wouldn't be getting the right aid units. So just trying to be smart with our tax-paying dollars, but also fit a need. The NASA HUNCH program, you know, we'd give them a multidisciplinary space where they could interact in an area where they're using all those tools, tools that I don't even know the name of, but they're doing great things with, right? You know, and you look at robotics, right now, they're at the high school, excuse me, right now, they're at Martha Brown. And Martha Brown's a great host. Dave Dunn opens his doors happily, but these are high school students, you know, and they don't really have a space, dedicated space for a program that we are proud of and our students interact with, and we would definitely be able to use our new spaces, whether it's off the cafeteria, you know, on a Thursday or Saturday night when they're there, or, you know, another dedicated large group instruction area.
And the pool area?
And the pool area, it's very important. It's a... It's located here, so it's highlighted, and it's planned, and there's dollars in there to do reconstruction within the pool area and the, and the Phase 2 work. So the Phase 1 is gym, and then the intent is Phase 2 is to work on the pool. So again, splitting up dollars, so we don't go over our aid limits, you don't go over your aid limits, which is, which is better for tax purposes.
And the fitness center that's currently on the land, which is really fairly new, is that included in the accessibility of what you had previously for the Minerva Deland facilities?
Can you rephrase that? I'm just like, because.
Fitness center of Minerva Deland.
Yeah, it's brand-new, yep.
It's fairly new.
Yeah, fairly new, the last 10 years.
And when the merger takes place.
Yes, it will still be there.
And still accessible, just like the other.
I think, again, that's, that's worth saying again, thank you for repeating that, so I had clarity. Yeah, Minerva Deland's a facility that we need, our school, our sports, our performing arts, you know, students go over there for assemblies, you know, we need to make sure that there's access and the workout center there, that would also be, you know, part of the conversation, I would, you know, without a doubt. Yes?
Of course, our worry remains fiscal sustainability. While this would be going on, and we still have to pass yearly budgets, it all comes out of the same wallet of taxpayers, so we don't want to be in a roofs or raises situation that our raises, our benefits be maintained while all of this is going on and budget's passing is a, a lot of balls in the air for, for everyone.
I think, I think it's how you communicate that, because the roofs are supported by state money, all right, and the raises are supported by, you know, the tax property. And you're right, but people get that melted in, and I, I respect that, and I think, how you message that and communicate that, you know, the state dollars are there, and if we don't use the state dollars to build and maintain and further students the very best facilities, somebody else will.
But there's still a portion that is not, you know, 30%, right? 23% is not.
And I think, you know, when it, yes, I'm not disagreeing with you that we need to be thoughtful in how we message and how we manage, again, our reserves. Our reserves are an important part of how we plan, so, you know, to offset the impact on the tax, I think that's important, Matt.
Yeah, and that also goes into balancing any, right, we've all, if, if we've had a car loan or a house loan, at some point in time that, that drops off. So as a district, we look at also trying to balance any debt retirement that's falling off each year for prior capital projects that have taken place, trying to minimize the annual year-to-year impact of when that, that debt falls off, and try to match it up with any future capital work, so, good question.
I think, I assume you're right in point, though, and that is, for example, the May 21st vote that we have is for our school operating budget, it's not for this project, right? And the money is associated with these projects, Phase 1 and Phase 2, will be separate on approval votes from the community, not operating budgets for salaries and programs. They'll be separate to the capital projects. But they, so I go back to what you said, Brett, we have to communicate that succinctly. These are separate initiatives that have to be approved by the voters. And, you know, if we mix that up too much, I think we can provide exhaustion, so we have to be careful about that. But you also, Brett, another key point, Brett, is that there is state money, which is our money, it's tax money, right? I hate state aid because it's really our money in the first place, but that, that money will go somewhere. It will go somewhere. There are districts around us that are having big capital projects, but they're kind of that money will go to districts that have capital projects to improve their facilities for their kids. We have aging facilities with science classrooms built in the 70s and boilers that have never been replaced. We, you know, we need that money as well to improve the district infrastructure, but also improve, improve the classroom experiences for teachers and kids. And that's what I'm excited about, is the ability, a potential ability to use state funding to really supplement these projects and really improve the environment for everybody.
And I think this, go ahead.
I was going to say, just to kind of add to that and some of the other pieces, important note that when we talk about the two pieces being separate, is that the building aid associated with any capital project is not money that the school districts may use for operating purposes. It's strictly meant for capital work, so I think that's a good piece that we've talked about in terms of making sure it's isolated and understood that those two pieces are separate, because if districts don't, aren't pursuing capital projects, the building aid associated is not flowing in to the school district for operating. So again, you know, unless there's a capital project, there's no building aid flowing.
Yeah, and this slide kind of talks to that, is all the other local districts in Monroe County are capitalizing on using that building aid dollars to enhance their facilities along with this. And it is something that you're trying to get on, on a routine to be able to utilize the debt that's coming off, so you can maintain your tax impact on a community and maintain your tax levy. So it's something that, it is, it's a system that is being put in place throughout that, so there, there are dollars there, they're provided by New York State through the building aid, and if, if you don't go and head with capital projects, it's something you don't get to utilize in, in your district. So that's something that, yeah, the district's trying to put that in place.
So just to follow up on what David was saying, so the first vote put forth to the taxpayers in this district would be in December, right, of 2019, for the, the passing of the first phase of the major construction, right? If, let's just say, if, if that were to not pass, what, what happens next? Like, do we go back to the drawing board, do we adjust the plans?
I think, I think that speaks, that, that speaks to, you know, being responsive, and very, very well. I mean, you know, if 2019 passes, but 2022 doesn't pass, you know, you know, the variables might be different in our world's events, in our national events. So, so yeah, I mean, that's part of the conversation, and I think, you know, do you want to speak to that, Peter, or?
I'm not sure what to add in terms of where, we're aware of that. There's part of me who says if we make the decision, then we go for it all out, but it's not, it's not something we can handle financially, right, to do a major 80 million, 100 million dollar project. So that's just an impossibility, but it gives the benefit, if we think it's a benefit, to say what happens in between step two and three that we need to rethink. There's been questions, what if our enrollment goes back up? Well, we're, that's a good what-if, we paid money for a good projection, but it is just a projection, and, and so what can change? And so it does give us some time to relook and consider new facts on the ground as they are. We want to do what's best overall for the district on a couple of things, and we're hitting all of them, but he's hit them all in there, and I just love where we're, where we've gotten to, that we're having these types of long-term discussions rather than year after year, which is to feel, this is my interpretation, right, where we were for too many years in my early board service, it's just one year at a time, one year at a time, and suddenly we need to maintain something, so let's hurry and get that fixed. Now we're looking at, yes, let's do this, but at the same time, the Audit Finance Committee's saying, okay, but we want to look at this debt service. We want to know that on a three, five-year rotation, we'll have debt come off, and so we'll plan another facilities project that helps keep our structures going for another 30, 50 years, because they're old, but we don't need to knock them down necessarily, or maybe we do need to knock down parts, right? Those are all part of the conversations, and they will change, the facts on the ground will change, the governor makes a second guess sometimes, just in what he does. But the, this step gives us the opportunity to look at it that way, to phase it here, phase it there, see what changes, and make adjustments as appropriate.
Because we need to maximize our building aid units, and that maximizes aid. That first rendering that you saw, right, was a $35 million project. We got no or minimal aid, $7 million on a $35 million project, and that's why, you know, the board looked at me and, you know, and I looked at them, and, you know, go back to the drawing board. And, and I think this speaks to how we could try to phase it in, how debt can be managed so there's minimal tax impact. The goal would always be to have no tax impact, but you have to say minimal. Any other questions?
Last one, I can't.
No, you're fine, this is great.
Has there been a traffic study if you add in all of these new staff, as well as parking, as well as student drivers, parents, I mean, not the safest parking lots, but also to how the, all the vehicles?
There will be a traffic study, it's part of the process. And I also think it's important to recognize that we are losing students here, too. So if you look at the graduating class of 501, or whatever it is, or 500, we're going to be anywhere between 420 and 440, so that's going to be 60 less drivers. But we're also bringing in staff, right? And we also know that we have parents dropping students off more than they're using buses. And we also know that we have to do a study that speaks to traffic flow. Not a lot of different options, but there, you know, how we use our parking out there, if there's areas that we can, you know, build into to deal with some of that, we need to address. And that will impact, you know, those, those dollars that we were just talking about. Did I cover that okay, or do you want to say something smarter?
Just great. But yes, we're required to do a traffic study and other things as part of a secret process prior to going to vote. So, so that, yeah, State Environmental Quality Review Act. So we're required to look at that, lighting, sound, all sorts of fun stuff. But in terms of the internal circulation, we're looking to deal with the bus loop itself, okay? So that's its own animal, of course, upfront. But the rest of the circulation within the boundaries of the site will be looked at as well. So if there's more queuing length that we can create for parent drop-off, et cetera, we'll do that to try and help out the circulation path. There's, yeah, there's no guarantee what we can do at the light, because that's not totally under our control or your control, so we have to deal with county and, and try and prove how some points there to see if we can improve it.
The children could also take the bus.
That's accurate.
Any other questions? I appreciate your questions. I'm grateful that you took the time to spend two and a half hours with us to discuss, or an hour and a half to discuss this very important district conversation. So we're here to have, answer any questions if you want to come up afterwards, otherwise, thank you so much. May 6th.